2023, Council President is going to be joining us virtually. I do not see him yet. And Council Member, oh, there you are. And Councilmember Stratton is joining us virtually. So we are going to start, we have a full agenda.
Full agenda.
Today. And we're going to start with our point in time. Thank you. We're going to start with our point in time count discussion with Daniel Ramos. And I don't, is Daniel here?
Yeah.
Right there.
Oh, there you are. You're hiding in plain sight. All right. Come on down. And this is a discussion, so. Yes.
Questions anytime.
Councilmember Bingle, this is your kind of study session.
I'm talking about.
All right.
Wait, questions at any time? I was gonna say, hold your questions till the end. Great, well, thank you, everybody. I appreciate being here today. Daniel Ramos with Community Housing Human Services, the CMIS lead, running the Community Management Information System. We conducted the point in time count like we do every year, and today I'm bringing that information forward to all of you. So, oh, thank you, Jacoby. So let me get my notes here. So before I get started, I do want to thank everyone that participated in the point in time count, those that came and volunteered, the numerous providers, shelters, transitional housing projects that participated in this, and all of the 170-plus volunteers that came out over the five days to do this count. So this count is one day a year. We are, we take an extra five days to do the unsheltered count, and that's part of the methodology that HUD prescribes, that we do it that way. What you see here on this first slide are the, the primary categories for the point in time count. And so today, my presentation is going to be primarily descriptive. I'm going to give you the counts as we have them now, and there is follow-up analysis happening in different categories that I'll go through here. One thing I do want to really impress on folks who are watching this presentation or here right now in person, this is a county-wide count. This is not just a count that we do in the city. This involves partners at the City of Spokane Valley, Spokane County, here in the city, all the providers that I sort of mentioned earlier that, that help with this. And we take over that five days, well, we leverage technology internally here at the city. We work with our code enforcement partners, and they give us the encampment data, and we accumulate that and look at that over the last couple of years and create a, basically a hotspot map, so we know areas to target for that unsheltered group, so we have that high-impact, high-value count. HUD does say, please don't go walking around in the forest where there's likely nobody. Do look at places where homeless and individuals and households frequent often. So that's, that's where we focus our efforts. That said, we do have a grid. We cycle through each quadrant multiple times throughout that five days. I will say, we pull primarily for the sheltered count, that's that emergency shelter, transitional housing numbers. We pull that from our CMIS. This chart here, I know it's a little small. I'll get this presentation out to everybody. Really, these are our main categories: individuals, families, and veterans, the chronically homeless. Where you see those red dots since 2009 to pres, to, excuse me, 2022, this is just from the start of the pit and its, in its birth to last year. You can see where we had increases, we've had increases overall since 2022. Today's presentation is going to be 2023, all new content, so that's really our departure point. That's 2022. The rest of the slides are going to be where we're at in this last count. So I'll just go ahead and say it. I think everyone's wondering what was the, where are we at with this? We had increases in both categories, our unsheltered and our sheltered count. So those reports you saw earlier, those drill downs of what the sections I'm going to go through, we're going to see where those increases were as we go through this. In this first one, this is the overall pit count. You can see that we, last year, we had 1,757 persons. This year, we have nearly 2,400 individuals were counted in the pit. This is a 36% increase from last year. Our lowest point, we had 981 individuals, or excuse me, total persons counted in the pit back in 2016, for some context. In our unsheltered count, we had a 16% increase. That was of about 132, oh, exactly 132 persons from last year to this year. Our lowest count in 2013 was 60 individuals in the unsheltered count. And this is a composite of our emergency shelters and transitional housing projects. We went from 934 to 1,425, excuse me, 35 this year. That's a 53% increase. This is where we saw the largest increases, and this tracks pretty closely with the increase in beds during that time period.
Daniel?
Yes?
Can I ask, what, what shelters are included in the sheltered count?
Oh, wow, this is a quiz, okay. Yes, this includes our shelters at Cannon, Track, Catalyst, the Salvation Army's, Way Out Center.
So the Way, the Way Out Center is not a shelter, so do we include transitional housing in this as well?
In the sheltered count, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Okay, is there, is there a way to segregate those numbers?
Yes, there is a way to segregate those numbers, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Daniel, along those lines, are you counting UGM? Are you counting Hope House? Are you counting the crosswalk youth?
Great question, and thank you.
And Truth Ministries.
Yes, thank you for that. What we do is we, those that are participating in our information system, we pull that down that day of. Those that are not, we have a mobile app that we, we send teams to, to do the count on the night, on January 24th. So yes, we included accounts for all of those shelters. Thank you for that. We did. And I do want to thank Zoe Helm, who's part of the CHHS department. She did ensure that we counted every shelter. She did the research on any sort of pop-up shelters that might be in the valley or in the county, and so we had a comprehensive list before we began the, the count.
Daniel, sorry, one more question.
Sure.
In the past, have we counted transitional, the transitional places?
Yes, we have. We always have.
So this is apples-to-apples. We're not all of a sudden adding things to this count?
Nope, we are not adding things. These are apples-to-apples, yeah.
But we do have two very new transitional places, Catalyst and Way Out, and I, so I, I feel like we're kind of skewing maybe a little bit. That, that's kind of why I'd like to see the segregated numbers, just to get a better sense.
If they weren't there, they'd be in a, like, track, or they'd be on the streets.
Maybe. Need to look at the CMIS data, I think, to get a better sense.
I mean, we're talking about like 90 people, so.
And, and to clarify, yes, shelters come online and offline every year, depending on budgets and funding and need and availability and the season. So yes, that's a good call out on that. On the overall chronic homeless count, so this, this is a bright spot in the data, one of the few. We had a 26% decrease from last year to this year, and this is something we're curious about, and we are looking at doing more analysis in understanding this. And, sorry, the definition here, these are folks who have been homeless for a year or more and who are, who have some form of disability. A little bit more of a nuanced definition there, but that, that pretty much captures what that, what that group is.
Where would folks who have been homeless for more than a year without a disability, where would they fall in then? Because I think the definition you just gave was more than a year with a disability.
Yeah, that's great. You would essentially take that 415 and minus it from the, minus it from the total count.
To give us people who've been, but I'm assuming in the total count, you're going to have people who've been homeless for less than a year that are in this count.
Yeah.
So then, for people who've been homeless again for more than a year that don't have a disability, is, do they have a certain designation versus chronic homeless?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Yeah, that's, there's, that's a, that's a good discernment. No, there isn't a specific HUD category that I'm aware of, other than they've just been homeless for a year or more, but there is no definition as such, like chronically homeless. Does that, that answer that?
Well, I guess I'm just trying to figure out then why, maybe, maybe I'm just wrong on this, but chronically homeless would, feels like an inaccurate moniker for people who've been homeless for a year who have a disability. I, maybe I'm just missing that.
Oh, hey.
No, no, just, just in support, and it's not the ADA definition.
Could you talk into the microphone, Eric, sorry?
Thank you, Gloria. It's not the ADA definition of, of disability, and Daniel, please correct me if, if I'm wrong.
It, it's a long definition.
Yeah, so it includes, you know, individuals who potentially have some behavioral health, mental health. You know, you know, it could be, it could be employment or employability issues. So, so the disability comment is a very, very broad comment that would cover most people in the class. So I just wanted, and, and these are all based on HUD definitions, you know, which is a reporting agency that we have to file the information to.
Before we go on, Councilmember Sapon has a question.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask real quick, the sheltered count, the large increase was probably primarily due to Track. Were they operating around 300 around that time? Do you remember?
There's been some discussions about that, but to date, I haven't done a, a targeted analysis to be able to answer that specifically.
But that's when they were about operating at.
Yeah, they were operating at that time, yes.
Councilmember Wilkerson, did you have a question?
Well, Eric, answer, because I wanted to put more clarity on what disability was, because I was going the ADA route, but then I went, was it substance abuse or whatever? So thank you for that.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I just, I assume all this data is, is in a format that we could maybe do some additional analysis. So I'd be curious to see what is that number of folks who are chronically homeless that do not have a disability? And I think there's some, probably some pieces to that to be very interesting to look deeper into as well.
Councilmember Sapon?
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
Bingle?
Yeah, my last, my last question on that is, would somebody with a substance abuse disorder be considered with a disability in that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. And this is the veteran count. This figure stayed somewhat flat from last year to this year. It is a 16% increase, but in total counts, it's, it's 18 veterans. It is still a 9% decrease from our high in 2020. At our lowest point, we had 91 veterans in 2019. This figure, I will say, has fluctuated year to year, peaks and valleys in that data. So a little bit frenetic with some, in terms of, in comparison to some of the other graphics. And that trend page at the very beginning shows that. And this is the, our singles category, our individuals. This was by far the largest increase of 41%. And, and yes, this is, when we looked at this count for those that were in shelters, that was the largest, this represented the largest group, those in shelters. This is a 604-person increase, a breakout here, and I think, Councilmember Cathcart, you asked for that. For individuals, I did look at that breakout. In emergency shelters, we had 1,024, and our transitional housing projects, 75, and 936 in our unsheltered group. It's been a steady increase since 2013, which was 602 at that time. Persons and families, this was a 13% growth from last year. This one is an interesting one, so it's 329 persons. Really think of families as households, so this represented 105 households, so an average household size of three. And so here we're going to get into the demographic information. It is divided up between sheltered and unsheltered. I do want to point out that this is self-identified, so this, there is some verification that happens in shelters to confirm this information. It's not required, and especially with the app, as volunteers went out and did surveys over that time period, this is just information that they gathered, self-reported. That's gen, that's gender. Here we have race, pretty, pretty comparable for the most part in terms of volume between the sheltered and unsheltered. Same with the age distribut, distribution. You can see that, that 35 to 40 range represents the median. Any questions about the demographics?
Questions for Daniel, anybody?
Like me to go back?
People online, do you have questions, Council President or Councilmember Stratton? No, okay.
I'm good right now.
And this is our additional homeless population. This is, again, barriers that were self-identified during the pit, and this includes both our sheltered and unsheltered groups and individuals who are able to select more than one barrier here.
Daniel, can that be broken down to show us the sheltered and unsheltered in each category?
This, no, unfortunately, it's an aggregate that gets just generated by the reporting system.
But the overall reporting system, couldn't you kind of run a algorithm and break it down?
We, we could try to reverse some of that and, and take a look, so yeah, I'll take a note of that and see if I can.
Councilmember Bingle.
Is there a particular group that you're curious about?
No, I just want to look at each of those, you know, whether they're suffering from mental illness or substance use disorder or domestic violence, and just get a better sense of, you know, where are they and, and what's their situation? I, I just, I think in every single thing that we do, we should break it down to the most, you know, get as deep into the weeds as we can so that we can get some better information.
I would agree, and also, maybe we could come up with some other categories too, as we think about all the things that we've encountered when we were talking to people at Camp Hope or the Track or whatever. So there's some other nuances, I think. Did you want to say something, Councilmember?
Yeah, of these numbers right here, how many of those are like co-occurring?
There were individuals that did select more than one. I don't have the ratio for you on that, on how many individuals selected more than one, but that is something I can inspect.
Okay.
Good questions.
Councilmember Canair, I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Stratton.
It just occurred to me as I was remembering some of my visits to Camp Hope. The people, a lot of the people that I met on a certain, during a certain time period were homeless because of apartment increases in their rent. Do we have any breakdown of that? Do we ask that question as far as a possible reason for homelessness?
Did you, were you able to hear that, Daniel?
I, I promised that Councilmember Stratton was not a plant here to ask that, but that is my next slide.
Perfect, thanks.
Good intuition. This is the reasons for homelessness. This is, this represents just our unsheltered group. This is the question we ask for, for them out in the field. What are the primary reasons you became homeless this episode? And here you can see, same as last year, in the top three was affordable housing and substance use. And new to that top three is the family support, lack of family support, excuse me, and network support.
How much beyond these topical categories did you, did the questions get more detailed? For example, unemployment. I mean, I know there's a, a lot of people looking for employment. I'm just kind of curious, is there details on that as to why they, they can't find employment?
No, so unfortunately, no. This list was generated with our research group at EWWU. They took this along with their planning expertise, and then years of just experience here in our department and with the administration and others, where we've looked at questions that are most important in terms of that, that pick list that you see there, that most folks want to see. We did have the other category, and that includes things that just don't fit and other ones, like I, I went to jail and that was my reason. Those other categories get a little bit more detailed because you have to ask more questions, but those are just the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Has eviction been a consistent category in the count?
No, that is a new category this year. That was one from last year. We got input, I think, from this group, actually, if we could add that to the list, which we did this year. And I, I think it's, you know, interesting, we, you know, a lot of money went to keeping people housed during COVID, so that is an important question and, and one that we wanted to include.
And to go with that, would, what would be helpful is to understand the reasons for eviction as well, not just eviction, but why were you evicted would be a really helpful subcategory of that.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. I think one of the constraints with the eviction data is there is the process of eviction and then getting that recorded, actually recorded with the courts, and there is a, there's a difference. What we learned during, doing some scraping of that data is you really have to do, you know, a public records request on evictions and the sheriff's office and, and other places, and then put that together. So it's pretty time-intensive. I would thank the EWWU research group for putting that data together for the story map. I'll, I'll talk about that in a second, but that's not this data.
So this data right here is not self-reported then, in some of the ways that the others are self-reported, or is this also self-reported?
This is self-reported. This is self-reported.
So if it's self-reported in that eviction, can we ask, why were you evicted?
That could be a follow-up question, yeah. Yeah, that's, I'll, I'll note that. Why were you evicted? And, and, you know, I can come back. We can workshop that. Why were you? Get some others in the group to look at that question.
Daniel, is this 100% of responses, or did some people not respond as a?
Some people did not respond.
Do you know how many did not respond?
No, that's a really good, good question, how many respondents we had. I will get back to you on that one, yeah. I don't want to misquote that number.
Does the overall shelter, shelter, unsheltered count include everybody? And then some of these detailed questions are, are where we kind of lose some of them? Is that?
Yeah, this is, this is only the unsheltered. Those questions do get asked, but aren't required for those that go to non-CMS participating shelters on that night of the count, UGM and others. It's just an incomplete data set, so to try to do apples-to-apples with it, I think would, I think the data quality there would be, wouldn't be up to the standard of being able to present that as a complete data set. So that's why we focus on the unsheltered. And so this is, this is, you know, the, the personal reasons that people put out there for, for why they became homeless, the reasons. I did want to zoom out and do a comparison of just our housing affordability index here in Spokane and intersect that with our overall homeless count. So you can see it's pretty similar to last year. We did have a, an increase in housing affordability, and let me just explain this graph. This is essentially those that can have the purchasing power to get a home and those home sales. And as affordability drops below 100 on that Y-axis, that's telling us that that's where we hit the threshold of no longer being affordable in Spokane, and we hit that a number of years ago.
I, I need to ask this. Have you done a comparison with Cootney County on this?
We could.
I think that'd be helpful, too.
Yeah, we absolutely could.
And is, this is again county-wide, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And this comes from the UW Real Estate Research Center.
Thank you.
That figure, that green trend line. And then again, just thanking all of our partners, all of you, everybody who was here, who participated.
Yeah, I guess the one thing I didn't see is identifying, because this is a county-wide count, so identifying where each jurisdiction, folks are coming from, unincorporated county, city, valley, airway high, Liberty Lake, et cetera.
Yeah, so a bit of a teaser here, we'll be putting together the story map like we did last year, and that will bring all of that information together in that sort of self-paced report that you can scroll through and look at all of those spatial graphics.
And that's great, but in the meantime, can you just send us the numbers?
Send you something? Yeah, yeah, I could, yeah, I could put something together.
So, two things, Daniel. Thank you very much for all the information. One is, I thought we were supposed to generate quarterly reports on our homelessness. Is that happening or is that not happening? Quarterly updates?
Yeah, I think if you're referencing the municipal code, I'll let Jen take that.
Thanks, everybody. So we do have the ability to report on sheltered individuals on a quarterly basis. If we needed to, we'd be able to pull that information out of our existing reports. We do not currently have any method for capturing unsheltered on a monthly basis, reporting out quarterly. So I think if I read, read the municipal code, it clearly asks that we do a nightly count for unsheltered individuals and then report out on that quarterly. The pit count takes about nine months to plan. It uses over 150 volunteers. It uses multiple staff people, and I have not come across any way for us to replicate that on a night-by-night basis.
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, could we just have, and I assume Daniel will be able to do this pretty, pretty easily, just a live dashboard that shows our CMIS data, and then it can be compared with the PIT counts that happens once a year. Also, DSP is now doing their own point in time. I'm sure we could collaborate with them to get some of that data to include. So I, I, but the CMIS, I feel like we should have a live dashboard that any time we can pull up and just see the live data.
Michael, we've asked for that for years.
Hence the reason I'm asking for it again.
Again, okay, so keep repeating that, because in fact, I think we put it in one of our ordinances that we require that.
It is in an ordinance, yes.
It's a head-scratcher.
Yeah, but that would be very helpful to have.
Councilmember Canair?
Go ahead.
I guess the other thing I, the other thing I would add to that is if the quarterly, quarterly reports is required by the code, the Spokane Municipal Code, I would think that the quarterly information could change because we're supposed to be receiving updates from our shelters of how many people are leaving, how many people are being housed or going into transitional. I mean, do we get that on a quarterly basis from Track or Cannon or any of those other shelters?
Yeah, so we, we have a lot of data on sheltered individuals. The part that we don't have is the nightly reports on unsheltered individuals. So the sheltered.
Those are the ones that aren't going anywhere.
Those are, yes, because we would have to deploy teams of folks out to count people in the field every single night, and that would be a huge lift. We'd have to have a whole team of people who were doing that every single day of the week. But sheltered data, we can absolutely report out that information quarterly, and we can talk about troubleshooting, any reasons why we haven't been able to get a, a working dashboard. I know we have some of the data up online.
Okay, that would be good, because that's been a request for many years. Before you go, Council President, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to address that issue. When we put that ordinance together, we were told by CHHS staff that the CMIS system did have the information on unsheltered people, not from people observing them, but from vendors who were getting city funds. They entered information every time they talked with someone about what their status was. And so they might be seeing a housing navigator or just an outreach worker, and they would put that, so that there could be a data scrape that would show this is how many people in our system are unsheltered, not from seeing them, but just in the system. So I think that's what we were anticipating getting on a quarterly basis.
Yeah, and I, we could absolutely take people who are enrolled in supportive services-only projects. I think we'd have to look at the reporting in terms of determining, because a supportive services-only project isn't necessarily going to report out where that person's staying on a night-by-night basis. So it's possible that they could be. So it's possible that they could be in a shelter one night or unsheltered another night and then it wouldn't be comprehensive of catching folks that aren't enrolled in a supportive services-only program.
Go ahead.
Just to comment on the survey, so I really appreciate that we want all this information. Working with the mentally ill, there is a survey and then there's, feel like you're being interrogated. And so I think we have to really balance really what we're trying to capture. I know some, they'll get so far and then they're just checked out because it's like, why do you need that information from me? So I think we just have to be cautious and cognizant of that. We're talking about this very vulnerable population of how we capture data going forward.
Definitely, and we agree and that's been one of our ongoing challenges because of course there's a lot of interest in getting, you know, drilling down and getting as much information as we can. We do have requirements from HUD of things that we have to ask and we try not to add too many additional questions to make the survey unbearable for folks that are both asking the questions and for the folks that are responding.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingle, then Sipon.
If you want to go first, I kind of have a series of questions here. Okay.
You start.
Let's see, I know we're getting close to it. I might be able to email you some of these questions, but I guess, you know, so can you sort of take me through the process a little bit of, not necessarily a lengthy process of how the point-in-time count works, but I thought I heard you say January 24th and I mean, we're three months away, you know, from January 24th and so I just didn't know. I think I'm maybe having a hard time understanding of the work that's being done because to me, it doesn't feel like maybe we should have to wait three months to get this data. And so maybe you can sort of take me through the process because I guess I don't-
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I am happy to. I think some things were acute and circumstantial in terms of how long it took this year. Other things are just more process-oriented. So when we receive the data from, when we get the data, we collect it after those five days, then it goes into two different management, information management systems. And from there, it's a slow process of, well, at that point, we let shelters know they have until the fifth of the next month to get their information in C M I S all up to date and that data to be quality. And then at that point-
So that would have been like the fifth of February?
Around February 5th, yeah. And there's always, you know, a few stragglers.
What if they don't do that, sorry?
If they don't do that?
Yeah.
They're required through the contracting process to ensure that their data is up to date.
But we're the ones that have to hold them accountable to that, right? There's no other agency that's doing that?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah. We would hold them accountable for that, yeah. And, you know, for the most part, the, for most of the projects here, they do a pretty good job. We have a monthly data quality check that they have to subscribe to and let us know that their data is up to date and that information is in there. So once we get that, we work very diligently with the non-C M I S participating agencies to see if they had any limitations to collecting data from the app. And we work with them to know, is there a delta between the information we saw here and what was actually, who actually stayed there that night? And then we do a reconciliation process with that at that point. Is this too much in the weeds?
No, no, like I said, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out the timeline.
And this is a methodology from HUD. They allow for all of these pieces.
Yeah, just because, I mean, if we're looking for quarterly reports, you know, as we're going through here, if we can't do the quarterly reports on the unsheltered individuals, but there are good changes in a quarter, it feels like a quarter is too long for us to sort of understand what's happening in the system. And so, like I said, trying to understand the process. And this is something, again, if we're taking too much time, we can do this offline because I just kind of want to understand the process a little bit better.
I'd really would love to engage on this. I think there is some creative solutions to it, just kind of being in that, in the system regularly. I think there are ways to maybe sort of proxy what you're trying to get at. And then to understand just the, I do want to thank my team and others, the effort that goes into cleaning and scrubbing the data, the deduplication, all of that's done by hand because we know so much stock is put into this report, although there's other reports that I say probably measure things in ways that you might really find better or an improved way to measure that. But we do, it's a painstaking process. And then we were onboarding new staff in my work unit. So it was me training two brand-new staff in parallel to doing this.
Yeah.
And so I ended up tapping two other junior staff in the department. So it really was a confluence of things this year, like I said, acute in terms of the length of time. But I think one of the things that, you know, is a goal is to try to get this together as quickly as possible, but there is a process to that.
So I would like to work with you because I had the exact same questions three years ago. This is a problem. So let's put our heads together and let's have, what's your name? Councilmembers at phone.
Tell me Zizi.
I blocked you out. Ask your question, then we're going to move on.
Yeah, first I wanted to, can you go back to the graph of the housing and the population over time? But I just wanted to call out really quick the reported causes of it. 78% of people were reporting that their causes, homelessness, were other than substance abuse or mental health problems. So I think that's really important to call out. And the second one is the chart over time. Just the purple one is the overall-
Correct.
Point-in-time count.
Yes.
So it looks like we were kind of steady dropping until about 2016 and then it started trending upward from there, which reflects directly the housing. But then it really started going quickly around the beginning of 2019. I was able to like hover over the data in here and it looks like quarter one 2019 was 1309. Does that sound about accurate?
Let me, let me, let me check, but what's your question?
Oh, no, I was just wanting to just look at that trend and just highlight that the trend was increasing. So from quarter one 2019 to now, it's gone up dramatically.
So just to clarify, the quarters along the bottom are really, we only do one point-in-time count every year. So it's not quarterly increasing. It's just a point-to-point.
Okay, that's right. Thank you for that. That flew over my head. Yes, those quarters are for the Housing Affordability Index. That's published quarterly by U Dub. Ours is once a year.
Okay, so it's just point-to-point connections, okay. But again, that's still about 1,300 to now is about an 83% increase from 2019.
Yeah, you know, I would say the efforts that are happening now, keep those going. Find creative solutions to sustain those efforts. And, you know, I think we all listen and take care of one another as we do this work. It's important work.
Okay, we have two more questions then, that's it.
Quick, this is just a quick comment.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Yes. Go ahead.
I just have a quick one too.
Okay, then we have three more quick questions.
Mine legitimately is quick. Can you go back to the pie chart that showed mental illness, substance use and domestic violence? So right here, this is where it would be helpful to understand if there's co-occurring here because if you're looking at the 2390, you've got, you know, 1,150 here of the 2390, which would be 50% of the group that is a substance use disorder or mental illness. And so that's where that data will help us a lot.
Okay, and I have a note here to get that broken out.
Okay, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, is Salvation Army completely entirely up to date on C M I S reporting 100%?
As of today, no, we're working with them on that. They have been engaging regularly in the last few weeks.
Do you have a date?
Do we have a date that they-
That they will agree to be 100% up to date?
Like a deadline.
Yeah, that would probably be something I'd want to talk with them about. Right now, I don't.
And we are beginning the monitoring process with them and that will be part of the discussion as we review their reporting and what they've done to date. So we'll have a better answer after that.
Okay, that was the question, right? All right, Councilmember Stratton, go ahead.
Very quickly, I want to make sure, so all of this information is going to be available to the public on our website, correct?
Yes, yes, I'll work to get that.
And if we get updates, they're posted. So if people want that information or media wants that information, they can go right to the website. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll upload that to the C M I S landing page on the city website unless there's another recommendation on that. We can do that.
I just want to make sure I know where to direct people.
Okay, yeah, great, yeah, I'll do that and I'll make sure that that link circulates.
We're at the end of our time. Daniel, you've been patient and wonderful.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, thank you for listening.
Thank you so much and thank you to your team as well because I know everybody works really hard on this. So thank you.
Yes, thank you to my team too and everyone that helped.
Right, next up is the Matrix Study, S P D Vehicles, Rick Giddings and the Matrix Consulting Group.
Good afternoon, I guess. Thanks for giving us some time. About a year ago, at the prompting of city council, fleet, police and purchasing issued an R F P for the completion of a study to analyze and benchmark our police fleet operations in areas like take-home vehicles, vehicle commissioning, vehicle rotational policies and of course, the viability of electric vehicles for police work. Our R F P evaluation team unanimously selected Matrix Consulting Group to conduct the study. Matrix Consulting Group has a lot of experience in this field and has performed hundreds of similar studies for other fleets and police departments across North America. So we have, joining us today to present the results of their study, we have Catherine Vigneault, Timothy Coxwell and David Branch. Catherine Vigneault is our project manager. She is a recognized and well-respected leader in the North American fleet industry. She spent 27 years in the Canadian Army managing operations and sustainability for a fleet of over 32,000 vehicles. She served as the Director of Professional Development for N A F A, the North American Fleet Association. She holds a C A F M Certified Automotive Fleet Manager designation and in fact, has been instrumental in developing N A F A's C A F M training program. So Kate, I will let you introduce Tim and David, yep, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, am I loud and clear on your end?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, good to know. So I am joined today by two members of my team. First of all, David Branch, who's been a management consultant for 10 years and is currently dedicated full-time to our fleet practice. And Timothy Coxwell, joining us from Florida, new to the consulting world with a background as a third-party vendor in the fleet industry, a fleet manager of a sheriff fleet. And he has undergone firsthand many of the challenges that we witnessed in our dealings with Spokane. I just wanted to say one word, if you're familiar with our firm, Matrix Consulting Group, we did do another study for Spokane last year on public safety over time. Our company kind of does a little bit of everything from parks and rec to community development to financial services, to fleet, to police, to fire. So you may have heard from our members of our team in the past. So with that, I'm going to see if I can share my screen. Here we are. Okay, can you see the slide?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, because I love it when technology works. So let's turn to this police fleet study. And in essence, we completed a full best practices assessment and we concentrated in these six areas. And just as a snapshot, we're talking about the police fleet. We occasionally went into areas that may apply across the city fleet, but we mainly concentrated on the 404 assets of the police fleet, of which approximately 250 are patrol, sedans and SUVs. This is, all of our fleet work has to be based on a snapshot in time. So an inventory at a snapshot in time, which was sometime last summer. Fleets are ever-changing, there's orders being placed, vehicles coming in and out of the fleet. So there have been changes even since we finished our report in February. But just keep in mind that this is a representative snapshot of the fleet. I will have a slide on each of these areas after a quick overview of our findings. So for this overview, we found that the current state of the fleet had a number of strengths. First of all, the individuals that we dealt with, both on the fleet and on the police side, were experienced, qualified, passionate and dedicated about their work. And this isn't always the case, but there was a very positive relationship between police and fleet. And I think both sides would agree that their expertise, knowledge was being heard and respected. Another thing about the fleet that is very promising is that you do have a very good fleet management information system. It is considered one of the best in the industry. And the team is working on enhancing the data input and the data integrity in the system. So it will be an excellent tool for future decision-making. So with those strengths, there's also a few challenges and challenges translate into opportunities. And those are, first of all, to use that data in order to make performance and efficiency decisions to optimize fleet performance. We also identified some opportunities to right-size the take-home fleet program, recognizing that that decision is driven by operational policing factors. And our contribution to that is really an understanding of the costs. And then it's operational policing factors that of course, drive the ultimate decision on how many take-home vehicles the city, the communities should have. And then many fleets across North America are struggling with the introduction and path to sustainability. So we'll talk more about all these things during our brief presentation. The first area that I mentioned was fleet governance. And this is really setting up your fleet organization for success. Your situation is common to many government fleets who are seeking to professionalize the fleet organization in order to provide the best service to their customers, which are the city departments. So some of the elements of that are a formal fleet steering committee who meet regularly. Regularly does not mean weekly or even monthly, probably quarterly or twice a year on important fleet issues such as procurement, safety, maintenance and sustainability. It's really important to have a very strong, robust policy framework for fleet. You have some of those elements. The city has a centralized fleet management policy and the police department has both a vehicle use and maintenance policy. So it's a manner of taking those and building out the elements that are currently missing from the policy framework. Service-level agreements are a very effective tool to ensure that fleet and all of the customers they serve have a common understanding. And finally, on fleet governance, annual customer surveys to really understand if the maintenance shop in particular, but the other services provided by fleet are meeting customer needs. I'm going to ask David to talk a little bit about take-home vehicles.
Thanks, Kate. Take-home vehicles are a relevant topic, obviously. There are a lot of police departments that offer take-home vehicles for patrol and it's ultimately a policy decision that has to be made. But in our report, we try to provide some framework for thinking through that and some analysis to support that. So the first thing that's important to think about with take-home vehicles is having policies in place for that. Those are things like, how do you apply for a take-home vehicle? What are the criteria for determining who is and isn't permitted to use a take-home vehicle? How are the costs to be borne by the city versus the employee who's driving the vehicle home? What are the guidelines for personal use? Setting those policies firmly in place so that there's clear understanding is really important. A second important factor as it relates to take-home vehicles as well as some other areas is the use of telematics. So telematics being G I S-enabled kind of real-time tracking of vehicle location, acceleration and deceleration. and deceleration, fuel usage, those kinds of things. That's a really valuable source of data for making sure that take-home vehicle policies are complied with. It's also valuable for things like driver safety, evaluating the effectiveness of the take-home vehicle program in terms of fuel savings, identifying vehicles that might be good candidates for EV conversion. There's a lot of data that can be generated from a telematics program. When it comes time for you to actually make the decision about implementing a take-home vehicle program and the extent of that, you'll want to look at the cost factor, costs per shift, and Tim will talk about that a little bit more in a second. Talk about the impact on staffing and facilities. Obviously, if you put more mileage on a vehicle, that means more mechanic time and effort, more parts maintenance and repair, more frequent acquisition and replacement of vehicles as they're racking up higher miles. So that's a factor. Quantify somehow, community safety. There's an element of that if people see patrol vehicles going to and from shift, having more of them out in the community. There can be a perception that it adds to community safety. And then there's also a recruitment and retention factor. It's seen as a perk a lot of times for police departments to be able to offer those take-home vehicles. And so it might be something that helps the department remain competitive in the talent market, offering a take-home vehicle policy within, you know, a certain range. One final thing to consider around take-home vehicles is planning for EV conversion. And the big factor here has to do with charging. Who's going to be responsible for charging? Is there a requirement if an employee wants to charge their vehicle at home? What is and isn't permitted? And making sure that the city itself has the infrastructure in place for that if and when patrol vehicles make that switch. So I'm going to hand it off to Tim now to talk a little bit about some of the quantitative analysis around this.
Good afternoon, or I guess just before noon, right at noon. Fleets around the country are adjusting to take-home vehicle requests for police officers. It's a national trend. Demands are centered around recruiting new officers or the retention of existing officers. And so it's important in any vehicle assignment to consider the cost associated with this type of decision. We studied, analyzed, and compared the existing take-home vehicles by their commuting range and the cost associated with them. So you can see, when you look at your commuter range, you can see that 40, over 40 miles, there were 38 vehicles traveling over 40 miles and commuting. And those vehicles accounted for 15% of the operating cost, 20% of the fuel usage, and 12% of the maintenance and repair cost. So we wanted you to be able to review the range of commute, because one of the policies that agencies will set is they will allow a geo-vent or an area from the primary location to allow take-home vehicles within that area. At our agency, we allow connecting counties. So it's very important to understand the commuting range and what the effects are on the cost. Costs should also be reviewed by the shift. And we collected our shift information from fleet and police. And when you review it by shift, it's important to separate out what is the difference between a take-home vehicle and a non-take-home vehicle as it relates to the cost per shift that they are worked. So the advantage of non-take-home vehicles would be the number of shifts they've worked within a life cycle. A disadvantage for take-home vehicles is the number of shifts, shifts worked during a life cycle. You can see that we separated out the commuting costs for the take-home vehicles. And you can see that the maintenance and repair for take-home vehicles is higher than non-take-home vehicles. So those are factors that you need to consider because your expenses are going to go up just simply based off of vehicle miles traveled.
All right, I believe I'm up again. I think what Tim pointed out is really important, though, if I can just comment on that real quick. Like you pointed out, there's a cost associated with having take-home vehicles, but being able to quantify that gives you the lens that you need to make a decision about the trade-offs and whether it's worth it. I want to talk a little bit about utilization here, vehicle utilization. We made a few recommendations around this area. One of these is to have a utilization policy in place. So that would include, you know, vehicle utilization criteria, like whether the vehicle, its frequency of use is, what the duration of use for that vehicle is, how well its configuration is aligned with the job specifications that it's assigned to, you know, whether it's a good fit. Also, whether it has an emergency response function. These factors should all kind of be outlined in a policy so that they can be reviewed on a regular basis and it can be determined whether this vehicle's utilization is justified, whether it's needed, whether it should be switched to a slightly different kind of vehicle, replaced with a different upsized or downsized, as the case may be. We also made some recommendations here about decommissioning and disposal, basically keeping the fleet trimmed. So that involves conducting annual fleet reviews, and you want to get department contacts, the department head or whoever the assigned point of contact is, involved in those fleet reviews where they can look through the utilization criteria along with fleet and discuss which vehicles are good candidates, which vehicles should be retained, replaced, et cetera, based on their utilization. Once you've decided to eliminate a vehicle or retire it, it's good to decommission, dispose of it, and auction it off as quickly as possible. You don't want a ghost fleet hanging around. You don't want a junkyard full of vehicles. They lose value that way. There's more liability that way. So that's something that we pointed out. And then it's also good to, when you auction the vehicles off, to direct the proceeds from those sales back into the fleet replacement fund. You want to reinforce the linkage between maintaining vehicle value and recycling that value back into the ability to replenish the fleet. That way incentives are aligned for taking care of vehicles as best as possible, getting rid of them when the total cost of ownership, as I'm going to talk about next, is at its lowest point, those kinds of things. One other thing as it relates to utilization is having a vehicle pool. You guys have pool vehicles, and they're kind of spread around different locations within the city. We advise having that centrally managed. There are software programs that can be used for that. Centrally managing the pool will let you, you know, examine its use and fit it to, you know, as efficiently as possible to the use patterns that the city and the various departments need from that pool. We also talked about vehicle replacement planning. So the way that this works and what we recommend here is first, figure out what the optimal lifecycle is for each vehicle classification. And so the main criteria here are that you want to minimize the total cost of ownership, or TCO, as we refer to it here. And that includes things like depreciation, maintenance and repair, insurance, fuel cost, all those quantifiable costs, and replace a vehicle when its total cost of ownership for the year is anticipated to be at its lowest point. You want to minimize that. There are other goals that should be included also in your replacement plan. You want to make sure you have sufficient reserve capacity for emergencies, for high acuity situations. You may want to consider, you know, aesthetics of vehicles and the message it sends to the community, safety of newer models of vehicles, keeping things in warranty, stuff like that. But set those life cycles with the total cost of ownership in mind and as part of the plan. Based on kind of industry-standard life cycles, we estimate that you would need about 2.95 million in capital investment per year to keep your fleet up to date. That would increase thereafter with inflation, so just a shade under 3 million as capital fleet replacement costs. Over 10 years, you want to create a plan that kind of levels the replacement of vehicles so that it's never fluctuating too high or too low below that figure. If you decide to try and replace every, you know, aged vehicle immediately, there would be a huge spike in year one, and it's not feasible, it's not good fleet practice, it's too much work to try and replace that many in a single year, et cetera. You want to do some leveling over time. This graph, thank you, kind of illustrates what that looks like, where, you know, year one would be this huge spike, but if you kind of space out the fleet replacement so that you're getting the fleet up to current over time, you can keep it in line with that really consistent level of capital investment. Important in this is, like we talked about in the utilization slide, doing an assessment of the fleet each year. Vehicles that are up for replacement, evaluating them not just based on, you know, okay, well their 10 years are up or their 12 years are up, but also their mileage, their condition, whether they've suffered damage, whether there's, you know, notable maintenance and repair costs associated with keeping that vehicle around. It's an annual iterative process, but setting this replacement plan gives you a baseline of guidance. So that's what we spoke about in the report. And I believe now, Kate, you wanted to talk about maintenance practices.
Yeah, so just a couple of things to mention on maintenance. So first of all, we recommend that all fleets determine their shop manning and shop layouts in terms of the number of bays according to a methodology used by the federal government in the US, which is Vehicle Equivalency Unit Methodology, or VEU methodology. And what it does is that it equates the size of your fleet to sedan equivalents and uses some industry benchmarks to then establish how many hours a year it takes to keep your fleet on the road. We can then use productivity factors for mechanics to calculate exactly how many mechanics. And ultimately, this methodology is used to establish what the right mix of in-house and outsourced maintenance is for your organization. Mechanic training is the second point here. It's never been more important. With the increase in new technologies, including electrification, it is absolutely critical that you have a formal training program for mechanics. And industry benchmark is approximately 40 hours a year to be invested in every mechanic. Pre- and post-trip inspections are vitally important for a fleet. What they do is establish before use any issues with the safety and/or maintenance of a vehicle and have it addressed before it becomes a larger issue. And the final point here is provision of regular reports. So organizations need to have a reporting matrix that tell who needs what information at what frequency and in what format. And that allows for better decision-making within an organization. Some of the key KPIs that are industry standards in fleet. A healthy fleet, you would like to see 95% fleet availability at any time, so less than 5% of vehicles are broken or otherwise not able to be used. Preventative maintenance programs and compliance are vital to a healthy fleet, so at least 95% PMs done on time. And what that contributes to is a fleet where scheduled repairs will be at least 66%, because that really allows you to plan with some certainty. So that 66% is the sign of a healthy fleet where problems are being identified and scheduled to be fixed before the vehicles break down. Final slide on sustainability, and then we will take any questions. Tim?
So, you know, your goal should be to create a sustainable fleet plan, and that plan should be focused on the vehicle selection with petroleum reduction in mind. There's a lot of things to consider, and there's a lot of tools that you can use to create your plan. Telematics, as discussed earlier, is just absolutely critical in decision-making, especially considering the dramatic changes coming to fleet with the introduction of EVs. Absolutely vital to understanding utilization and the environment that it's being used in, and the environmental impact your fleet is having on your community. You cannot manage what you do not measure. It's an old parable, and the reality is if you're not measuring the vehicle performance and driver performance, then you don't have the ability to manage it. So telematics is the tool required to measure and manage fleets, including first responder fleets. Every one of the vehicles of the Leon County Sheriff's Office is, has telematics, and we use it to manage not only driver behavior, but also to evaluate our take-home vehicles and planning out our budgets. So it's critical to have that information. We also very routinely review our emissions and our greenhouse gas statistics so that we can have those available for the sustainability manager when requested. We benchmark this fleet against Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, Leon County Sheriff's Office, Cincinnati, and Phoenix. And it's important to make sure that you continue to follow up with benchmarking partners. And you may find that there are other partners that you would like to benchmark against with similar fleet size and application terrain as what you have in your environment. And while, when you look at the chart that's at the bottom of this slide, EV maintenance and repair data, fueling data or power charging data, it emerges daily, and the results that you see are basically early reporting. But one factor is certain, the maintenance, repair, and fuel costs are significantly less with battery electric vehicles than compared to internal combustion engines. And the data that you see in the table clearly reflects that.
Thanks, Tim. So that concludes our major observations and some of our recommendations from this study. Hard to capture a lengthy and detailed report in 20 minutes, but we're happy to take your questions.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that we have a hard stop on this topic at 12:15. So we'll keep the questions simple, and then we can do follow-up afterwards. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, and this is, I guess, really more, I'm really curious, are we going to get into the cost side of this, kind of a framework of how we would kind of begin the process of building out a take-home program or even just modernizing our fleet, et cetera? I'm just kind of curious what the next steps are.
Yeah, and I'll field what I can on that, you know, the, again, like we said, there is a cost to take-home vehicles, but there's also the benefit to it. And so what we have to do as an organization is find out where our values lie when it comes to, you know, what's the most important part? The cost is not necessarily the most important part. Recruiting officers is a part of it. Policing is a huge part of it. And so that's the, those are the next questions that we're going to start to ask, and especially when we're talking about going to electric vehicles, we have to worry about things like reimbursing take-home charging. And there's a lot of conversations to have.
Yeah, and that's really, I think that's what I was expecting we were going to get into today was, because I know the fleet study says, I think, bare minimum $3 million a year that we have to put in, and that doesn't even get us to the take-home actual part of it. So it's going to be even steeper, is my understanding. But I would like to see some very specific, and have discussion around those very different pieces around, you know, the electric vehicles, which electric vehicles, what size of vehicle, when are we going to do it? Because we know right now there are not electric vehicles that will work. Because we know right now there are not electric vehicles that will work for PD, so are we going to wait five years for that to happen? Like, I want to have all those conversations, and I think it's really urgent that we do, because, to your point, this is critical for recruiting officers. And so we have to have this sorted out, like, right away. So I'm hoping that very soon we'll have a plan that we can talk about there.
Okay. Council President, you have your hand up.
Yeah, this is for the consultants. Previously, we've had presentations on fleet that a battery electric vehicle would probably last quite a bit longer than internal combustion, maybe up to twice as long in terms of miles. And I just wondered, what is the formula that you all are using? Because when you're looking at the capital cost, if a battery electric is going to go two or three years longer, you have to factor in a second purchase on the ICE, and that really is going to change things. So I'm just wondering what the assumptions you all are using and your best estimates of that, because if we're going to battery electric, that's going to make it a lot easier to be replacing the fleet. So what are, what's the expert opinion out there on that?
So first of all, it's a great question and an opportunity to explain, I guess, our total cost of ownership methodology. But the TCO methodology breaks it down to a cost per mile, and it does take into account acquisition costs where during the life cycle, more than one of that type of vehicle would have to be purchased. So it takes into account the full capital costs over a period of time or a given mileage, and then your operating costs, whether they're insurance, fuel, and maintenance. The one change to that methodology that we used in this report that we had not seen done before, but we think is very critical, is we broke our TCO calculations to per shift. And you mentioned that the life of a BEV will be longer than the life of a ICE vehicle. That's true. But if you look at the shift examples, it's also true that the life of a take-home vehicle will be longer than the life of a pooled vehicle, because that pooled vehicle is doing so many more hot-seeding shifts. So then, if we add in the element of ICE versus conventional, pooled versus take-home, the only way that we could compare apples to apples was by going to a per-shift cost. So that per-shift cost actually takes those factors into account. There's a more detailed breakdown in our report, but we'd be happy to provide any additional information that we can to, you know, to make that clearer.
So the, my follow-up is, the last slide that you had, the capital for the ICE did not seem to take into account that it would have to be replaced prior to the battery EV, because they, you know, one was 70 and one was 58, and I'm imagining if you were going to replace that ICE, we'd have to put another 58 on there. And so I'm just wondering, do you, I get the difference between pooled and take-home, but let's just assume take-home, which is the direction we're going. I don't know if you've done that calculation, but I would love to see that, because right now, our fleet is basically saying lifecycle is five years or 100,000 miles, same for each, even though the battery EV is going to continue on. And so I'd rather that they use the battery EV life, and then how many ICEs do you have to purchase to match that? I'm not sure if that's in your report or not.
I don't know if we went that far to recommend different life cycles for BEV and ICE, because you're not currently using very many electric vehicles. But that is the starting point, is that the optimum life cycles by type of vehicle are completely different for conventional and electric vehicles. And so you can use industry averages starting out, because you don't normally have enough data to calculate what that optimum lifecycle should be for the electric vehicles. But I can let Tim say a quick word on what that resulted in, in the fleet with the introduction of three Teslas.
We're going to, we're going to have to move on. So if you could, Council President, go ahead and email your question, and you'll get an answer via email, maybe share that with the rest of the group. And same thing, please email your question. We have another group that needs to start right at 12:15.
Yeah. That's my question. I'm happy to email it, I just need the contact info.
And Jacoby will take care of that for you. I thank you so much for your presentation, appreciate all the information. Mr. Giddings, you're a rock star, thank you so much, appreciate you and all you do. And Jacoby will get you that information, so we can email questions, because I think everybody has a lot of additional questions. We could probably take up another hour here.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, and thanks, Matrix.
And now we have Dr. Henning. You brought students to talk about Spokane beat the heat, and we know we had some extreme weather the last few years, and people died. And we also know that the Lance Council has been helping us with tree planting to help with that heat island effect, and that we do have ordinance in place with 40% canopy cover by 2030. I hope we reach that goal, but we're certainly going to try. So why don't you take it away?
Thank you so much, Council President Bex, and Council members. It's great to be here with you today. My name is Professor Brian Henning. I'm the Director of the Gonzaga Center for Climate Society and the Environment, and I'm joined with colleagues, staff members, as well as some of our students, to share a little bit about our recent research. Jacoby, I'm not sure if you were able to get the presentation loaded. In the interest of time, I'm going to jump straight to the results of the research, which is in the report form that was just shared with you. The PowerPoint. Okay, so I'm going to skip over about us, because you're getting to know us, but we just celebrated our second birthday last week on Earth Day. So we're finally in a position to start sharing some of our research, and we've got, to start with, a group of students who worked on this as their senior capstone, and I'll turn it over to them.
Hello. Thank you for letting us speak with you. My name is Ben Brown, and I'm joined by my colleague Emma Gashi. We are seniors at Gonzaga University studying environmental studies, and as a part of our degree as seniors, we complete a capstone project in which we are allowed to, or privileged to supplement the work of a community organization who's doing important things here in Spokane. So we're happy to have the opportunity to speak with you all here today, but we won't waste any more time. As you all remember, in 2021, our region faced an unprecedented extreme heat event. During the 2021 heat dome, Spokane set a record-high temperature of 109, as well as a record-high overnight low of 77 degrees. But the effects of the heat dome went far beyond triple-digit temperatures and significant discomfort. During the week duration of the heat dome, 119 people in Washington State lost their lives due to heat-related illness, and 19 lost their lives here in Spokane County due to heat-related illness during the heat dome and in the day shortly ensuing. While we may sort of be led to believe that we only need to be concerned for small subsets of our population, such as unhoused or other even more acutely vulnerable people, that is not the case. Here is a map made by the Gonzaga Climate Center to show very transparently the consequences of the heat dome, the pins representing deaths in Spokane County, with records from the Spokane County Medical Examiner's Office. During that week, week-and-a-half's time, three of the victims were unhoused, while the other victims were found at or near their un-air-conditioned homes. And further research that has been conducted since has shown that the impact is far greater than those initial figures. A study on excess mortality from the Washington State Department of Health showed that in the weeks' time of the heat dome, there were 700 more deaths than expected in Washington when we compare the mortality figures from 2021 to recent comparable years. And a study from the Center for Disease Control showed a 69% or 69 times increase in emergency department visits during that 10-day period in the Western United States, again, compared to recent years' comparable data. And both of these studies confirmed this wasn't due to any ongoing trend in the COVID pandemic. Our central driver here was the extreme heat event that we were experiencing. And the challenge that we're facing here is temperatures are only going to continue getting hotter. Recent study from University of Washington researchers showed that in climate models predicting 2 degrees Celsius of increase, we could have temperatures like these here in the inland Northwest, in the Pacific Northwest, every five to 10 years. Here, we have a graph with 40-year historical means of average summertime daily high temperatures, and our trend is pretty apparent. We are trending upwards. In the last nine years, we haven't had a single summer that has gone below the average of this 40-year span, and our P-value represents the fact that this, there's only a 1% chance that this sort of trend could be explained by randomness, or, you know, not driven by the effects of the changing climate. So.
While we, sorry. While we may not be able to prevent events like the Northwest Heat Dome from happening again, as Ben was saying, what we can prevent are heat-related illnesses and deaths. We know that the deaths from the 2021 heat dome were all preventable. With the right resources and knowledge, our community can weather through these events, staying safe and healthy. So, so to address this issue, the Gonzaga Center for Climate Society and the Environment launched an initiative called Beat the Heat, aimed at understanding how our community is impacted by extreme heat and working to mitigate these impacts. This can't be done by the center alone, but the center is doing crucial work in addressing knowledge gaps and paving the way for Spokane to be more prepared and resilient. So to address these knowledge gaps, Beat the Heat conducted urban heat island mapping, collecting temperature data points across Spokane in July of 2022. A survey was also launched, asking Spokane residents about their perceptions and experiences of extreme heat. And with collaborations, heat education and awareness materials are also being created. So moving into the first part of our project of Beat the Heat is our urban heat island mapping campaign. But first, just to introduce, what is an urban heat island exactly? Urban heat islands are areas in cities that retain and absorb more heat. Examples of these include paved surfaces, such as darker roads, rooftops, and buildings. On top of this, a lack of canopy cover, like without trees and parks, can add to the urban heat island effect. As you can see in this figure, as urban space increases, so does temperature. The urban heat island effect creates temperature differentials across the city of Spokane.
And so established, to establish a place-based and applicable sort of understanding of urban heat islands here in Spokane, the Gonzaga Climate Center pursued a grant with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration to collect those temperature data points and create high-resolution urban heat maps. Data was collected by community volunteers, and over 40,000 atmospheric measurements were taken to measure temperature, humidity, and our heat index. And so our products look something like this. This is the map from the day that we conducted the research in the morning, when we found the highest differential in the city. It was 13.9 degrees between the warmest and coolest spots. We can see that East Central is, of course, the darkest red, meaning that it retained the most heat overnight. Most of the, most other places in the city were able to cool off to degree temperatures that were usually eight or nine degrees lower. In the afternoon and evening, which we don't have visuals for in this presentation, though, we saw eight and nine-degree temperature differences respectively. As the day progressed, we saw the South Hill, Manitow, Cannon Hill, Rockwood neighborhoods really managing to stay cooler than neighborhoods such as East Central, again, Emerson, Garfield, and North Hill. And so these temperatures, these temperature differences show us how the impact of urban heat islands can really massively differentiate the experiences of extreme heat on one day. And when we look at this day, in the afternoon, we measured temperatures as high as 94 degrees. Measurements at the airport were only 87 degrees. So the official records for the day were seven degrees lower than temperatures within the city, and when we think about days of extreme heat, we, again, think about how much higher could it be getting in the city, and what elevated level of risk do people not understand that they are facing, because it's not what it says on the weather app? Apologies. There's the afternoon one. We can see those trends that I laid out briefly there, up to 94 degrees, but as cool as 85 in some places.
Do you want us to wait for questions?
Yes, until the end, please.
So over the past few months, the Gonzaga Climate Center has worked with the Washington State Department of Health to create a correlation analysis, which is also illustrated on our website using ArcGIS data mapping layers. The correlation analysis looked at the relationship between temperature and other variables, including paved surfaces, income, and race, with the latter of these two variables being taken from U.S. Census tract data. And the results of the correlation analysis is where things get really interesting, because the analysis found a significant and very strong positive correlation between urban heat and paved surfaces, a significant and strong positive correlation between urban heat and the percentage of the population living under the poverty line, a significant and moderately strong positive correlation between urban heat and the percentage of the population that is indigenous, black, and identifies their race as other, as well as a significant and moderately strong negative correlation between urban heat and the percentage of the population that is white. The relationship between urban heat and paved surfaces demonstrates the urban heat island effect. And we can also see that there is a relationship between urban heat and other pre-existing demographic and economic inequalities.
Hi. Hi, hello. It's great to see all council members here. We're really happy to be here. My name's Caitlin. I work, I'm the program coordinator for the Center for the Resilience Side, and this is my colleague. I'll let her introduce herself really quickly.
Hi, my name is Karina. I'm an emeritus of Ex-Spark Fellow at the Center. Thank you.
And we're just going to spend some time talking about our community survey and next steps. So last, sorry, I should speak into the microphone. Last summer, we launched our community survey, and maybe some of you all were familiar, or you took the survey. And we wanted to better understand our community's experiences and perceptions of extreme heat. And our survey focused, so we focused on heat risk, heat communication, heat service, heat resources, both in home and in the community, as well as heat perception. And we received 1,799 responses, and of those responses, 1,520 of them were Spokane City residents. And we had it in both, available in both digital and physical copies, in English, Dari, Russian, and Spanish. And I just have to say, our community, really, the support from our community was incredible. A big shout-out to Meals on Wheels. Their volunteers helped us circulate 300 surveys to homebound seniors, which was just really incredible. Big round of applause to them. And we really worked hard to make sure that our demographics of responses strongly matched those of Spokane demographics. And while we'd like to spend all day with you chatting about our refindings, we did want to spend some time sharing with you all our key findings from the community survey. And so, as you can see on our slides, we wanted to find out, within our community, how many of our residents see high heat as a threat? And from our survey, we saw that a majority of the respondents saw high heat events as a severe moderate threat to the Spokane community. We also wanted to know, what are people doing during extreme heat events? Are they going out? And our survey showed us that respondents intend, 88% of respondents intend to stay home during an extreme heat event. We also wanted to look at AC and AC access. Our survey showed us that 23.3% of respondents have no access to air conditioning, and of those who have AC, 21.5 indicate that they have impediments, so such as like being able to pay for utility bills. And this is a really fun one. So this showed us what those who have AC, 21.5 indicate that they have impediments, so such as like being able to pay for utility bills. And this is a really fun one, so this showed us what, what communities want to see in their neighborhoods, what resources would they like to see in their neighborhoods that can help bring down temperatures. And over 50% said that they would like to see tree plantings and community gardens and green space in their neighborhoods, and almost 40% wanted to see cool roofs and parks, which is just really great, to be able to have this information. So what does this show us? We know that the 2021 heat dome was not a singular event. We know that our community members are going to continue to see and feel the impacts of extreme heat events. And from our heat maps, we see that it's not just little pockets of the Spokane area that are being affected by extreme heat events, that it's a majority of Spokane, and that certain demographics are disproportionately impacted during extreme heat events. And so this research really gave us a great insight on what the community needs from us, and how we can support the community during heat, during extreme heat events, so that people aren't dying during the next heat wave. And this just gives us a really great opportunity to work together towards community resilience.
Almost done. So I'm excited to report that we're in the early stages of partnering with the mayor's administration on exploring some ways that we can incorporate the research that we've gathered in order to inform additional planning for future heat waves. Some of the ideas that other communities are pursuing are early warning systems, expanded cooling centers, developing resilience hubs, we'll be talking about that. So really excited that there's this opportunity to partner with the mayor and her administration, in particular Sarah Nas, the city's emergency manager. Before I turn it over to my colleague, I wanted to mention, as you probably know, there are a number of different grant opportunities that are now available, especially through the Infrastructure Bill and the Inflation Reduction Act, that make literally billions of dollars available. And some of the significant portions of that funding is available for doing climate resilience work. And so it's exciting that there's additional work in this area, could actually be an opportunity to bring resources to the community to do this work. And so if we are interested in partnering together, we could actually find resources to help ourselves be better prepared. Also note that the Justice 40 Initiative and the current administration requires that 40% of federal funds be allocated to communities that are environmentally, historically been impacted by environmental injustice. And Spokane is eligible under most of these conditions, making our applications more likely to be successful in these federal awards. So we'd love to look for opportunities to partner with the city on these moving forward.
So more recently, we've been partnering and collaborating with the Spokane Regional Health District on developing a heat education campaign. We've, it's spread of, spread across a variety of different components, including interviews with community experts and public health experts as well. We've been developing infographics and fact sheets to really educate our community on how to identify heat-related illnesses and be able to know what to do and help their communities as, community members as well, to navigate these effects. We've been translating them into multiple languages as well, so we can distribute them to our impacted community members. We're developing web content and blogs to really allow the community to engage more[1174.87][1174.90]intuitively and deeper with the material. So resilience hubs are just an example of what a community resilient solution could look like. The Urban Sustainability Directors Network has engaged with, or created this idea. And there, there are a variety of different case studies throughout the United States and physical spaces. So these are typically spaces that are already pre-existing in our communities, there's not really too much that needs to be done. What, what it would look like is just hardening these facilities. And I'll show you an example in the next slide. But this would have, this, these would be takeover, or they would take place across the entire year, year-round. And it has three different modes of operation, normal mode, which our communities experience many stressors, such as income disparities or other health impacts, and this can impact their quality of life on a day-to-day basis. And in disruption mode, these, we've all experienced one, the COVID-19 pandemic, and this is something that really impacts and exacerbates the effects of our communities and their livelihoods. Other examples look like wildfires, or extreme heat events, or even landslides. And recovery mode is a really pivotal time to be able to connect with the community and see what they need, and what it would look like to adapt next time in case that event happens. So it really creates a space to distribute resources across the community in a more effective way, and reduces the strain and stress on local communities and organizations to distribute those services and resources. Here's an example of a community center, one, you know, this could look like creating energy generation facilities that could withstand up to 72-hour power outages, or any, any other resources. And again, this is a year-round facility that helps communities. So ultimately, we want to ensure that Spokane residents have the knowledge and awareness to be able to navigate extreme heat-related symptoms and illness. And we want, we want to make sure that they can help their communities as well. But by providing them with the information and the knowledge, and sharing that to them, they can help protect themselves and also protect others, and ultimately lead to fewer people who are ill, who are ill and die due to heat-related illnesses. But ultimately, too, we can't do this alone, and it's really important that we establish intentional relationships with people to be able to, you know, develop solutions for our communities and build that community resilience.
Right, any questions?
Councilmember Cathcart does.
Yes, thank you. I want to get into the technical details, if we could, of the, just the process you went through. I'm curious, did you guys like map trees throughout every neighbor, like just, what was that process? How did, what did that look like?
For the urban heat island mapping project? Yeah, so the, we worked with a consultancy called Kappa Strategies to design seven different routes. The routes were going past points that were crowdsourced by the community, so places that people thought, bus stops, malls, schools, parks, just a diversity of different points. And they designed the routes so that they would go past a sort of a variety of different kinds of structures, different kinds of environments. So they would cover all the different types, and then the full 65 square miles of the city, so that they would then be able to extrapolate from that what the heat differences were in each of those neighborhoods. So on the website, at Gonzaga.edu/heatmaps, you can turn on a layer that just shows the actual traverses, the routes that the volunteers drove as they were taking their temperature readings, and then they use those, plug those into computer models to extrapolate into those neighborhoods what, what the temperatures were.
Gotcha. I was, I was hoping maybe out of this, we'd have kind of a tree density map that could be built to look at, because I think that'd be very helpful.
Yeah.
That's accurate?
We.
Our 40 group.
Okay, I'd love to take a look.
Yeah, there's a couple of different, we have a, we were really close to being able to have a high-resolution canopy map from the Forest Service? No, the, the Department of Natural Resources at the state level, who has a really nice high resolution, and we're just having a little bit of trouble getting it connected, it's such a large dataset because it's so granular and so high resolution, the files were enormous. So, and the city, you know, its urban forestry program has some too. So we were able to do the paved surfaces, but we were still waiting on the canopy, but we hope to get it up there so that, that you could turn those layers on and analyze it directly yourself.
And then related, I'm curious, what is the measurable difference, if all, all things being equal, what is the measurable difference between green space versus green space that has canopy?
So I'm not sure that I could quantify it. It would be interesting to try and look at the data that we've gathered, to see if the data could answer that question more fully, what the difference is between, let's say, a large green space of grass versus a canopy-covered space.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to infer that it's likely that the canopied space would be significantly cooler, so I'm guessing it'd be go like, you know, canopied, green space, then pavement, or, you know, like as far as what, how warm it is. But exactly what the differential would be, would be really interesting to measure, and it, I'm not sure, but it'd be interesting to see if we could try and answer that using what data we've collected.
And, because I, and I, and I bring this up, because I think it'd make it easier if you have that data to argue for, you know, in particular, more street trees in certain areas. But also, I mean, I think our parks' master planning process last year revealed, not that it was a secret to anybody, the massive discrepancy in, in green, you know, park, parkland between the north of the river and south. And so just taking all of that into account, you know, is, is simply adding a little bit of parkland going to help? Or does that parkland really need to be, you know, have canopy cover, et cetera? So that's kind of where I'm.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure, I can't give you a concrete answer yet, I can say that Garrett Jones, when we presented last week, got really excited about the data, and I think it had something to do with exactly the, the topic that you're bringing up. And so I'm hoping this will be a good basis for those decision-making processes. So, yeah.
I would add to that, Lands Council isn't waiting for that, they're already targeting Northeast and East Central. Yeah, to plant trees. Knox Presbyterian is doing 100 trees around that neighborhood. So we're already doing it, hedging our bets, because the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. And we're already behind. So Councilmember Sapon, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I had a quick question on these hubs. And so it looks like the hubs are really about retrofitting current existing infrastructure that we have to make it more resilient and access points for the future. Is that right?
Yeah, so take a library, a community center, a church, it would be a site that, that those people who, who maintain the site think that it would be a good, you know, use of that facility. And so, for example, we're in early conversations with the city-owned community centers around smoke readiness planning, which is the, the next work that we're beginning our research on now, and we're partnering with the city, and with the Spokane Regional Clean Air Agency on a, on a smoke grant to the EPA. But it would begin this work of potentially moving toward the idea of them as resilience hubs, so it would retrofit Northeast Community Centers HVAC, so that it would be able to take better filters, so that it would be, you know, more cleaner air, you know, centers. So I don't want to get ahead of, of these community assets, but the idea is not building something new, but finding those trusted community partners who are already are there, and then getting them resources to harden their facilities, so that they can be refuges for community members. We have this gap, though, if the survey data shows that 88% of people don't intend to leave during a heat wave, but they don't have a way of cooling off their space, there's going to be a lot of educational component to this too, of people not realizing that they're maybe in more danger than they thought. And so a lot of, of the partnership with the Health District has been trying to focus on educating people about when and why they might want to leave their home, or do they have a place to go.
There might need to be a transportation component, too.
That's right, we've spoken to SDA, and who, I think, as you probably know, last year started providing free rides to the, the cooling centers, but they didn't find that they were, they were used particularly. So I'm hoping this is the beginning of a great collaboration between SDA, the city, Clean Air Agency, the Health District, and the Climate Center, to be able to partner together to figure out how to make a really coherent, tight heat response plan, so we can start knitting these together into an even more effective plan, so next time we all have the same goal of, of there's, you know, people being able to be resilient and not get sick or, or die.
And I want to ask our virtual people, Council President, Councilmember Stratton, do you have questions? Councilmember Stratton left. Well, fine. Council President, do you have questions? He's, he's waving, he's just waving at you, Dr. Henning.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Any other questions from Council?
Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it.
Appreciate your time as well, thank you.
Thanks.
Right, we're at the end of our agenda, thanks, everybody, we'll see you on Monday. Meeting adjourned.